Tonight is a special meeting, the Enfield Town Council's special meeting. 5:37 in the council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councillor Bosco is absent. Deputy Mayor Sikala?
Here.
Mayor Crissati?
Here.
Councillor Despard? Is absent. Councillor Finger?
Here.
Councillor Hopkins?
Here.
Councillor Ludwig?
Here.
Councillor Mangini?
Here.
Councillor Pisner?
Here.
Councillor Santinella?
Here.
That's eight members present, three absent.
Okay, tonight will be budget discussions, Department of Public Works, Water Pollution Control and Capital Improvement. Don Noons, please. Thank you.
So tonight, just to give a quick overview again of Department of Public Works, what we do for those of, you know, we're far, one of the, said, the most far-reaching departments that cover a lot of grounds that you don't, that you wouldn't really think would go to us. But again, what is DPW? Well, we are administration and engineering office. We have building inspection division, building and grounds, custodial, equipment maintenance, otherwise known as fleet, highway, refuse and resource management, and water pollution control. And we have a grand total now on staff of 147 people onboard. So the administration and engineering office is basically the nerve center of DPW, handle all the budget through their capital projects, payroll, purchase orders, the engineering office, which handles excavation permits and map document management. So we, the engineering office, right now averages about 400 permits per year, excavation permits, and we manage that along with the roads program. There's six people under administration that are paid through the, through the budget, and one roads engineer that's paid through the roads referendum account. Building inspection, here's a little interesting tidbits for you. So fiscal year-to-date, we have had 2,255 permits pulled in the town. We've had 66 housing violations, and with that, we've had 3,219 inspections done by our four staff. We've also, the building inspection division is also responsible for record-keeping, FOIA's, and also is the, a gigantic revenue generator. So fiscal year-to-date, we have brought in $865,122 in permit fees through the building division, with a construction value of almost $50 million. The previous FY last year was 1.5 million in revenue as well. So again, it's very typical to be well above a million, between a million and a million and a half per year that we bring in through the building division and with seven people onboard. Building and grounds, so the renovations that you're gonna enjoy downstairs with the new conference room, the, all of the dais here and the stuff, the building and grounds completed that. We do repairs for both the town and Board of Ed. We have over 400 acres of parks and grounds and over 1.5 million square feet of building space. 54 athletic fields, depending on the season, plus or minus. Sometimes that changes more because we put fields on top of fields, but again, basically 54 fields. Snow removal, we're also responsible for HVAC, electrical and plumbing, and we have currently 23 people onboard to go do all that. Custodial, in 29 town buildings, 1.5 approximately million square feet of space to clean, and with the addition of JFK, we added, the school added 20,000 additional square feet to that building. We have 57 staff with two crew leaders, and the rest are custodians. Fleet, we are responsible for 434 assets, which is inclusive of both vehicles and equipment. So any plated mowers, any of that kind of stuff is, that would come to the fleet division. So we handle everything but the school department. We do have two school department vehicles, but everything else is all upon us, police, our own DPW, and the like, magic carpet, all the buses, all that stuff comes to the fleet. We're also responsible for the acquisition and disposal of vehicles and equipment, and by doing so, we've been facilitating internet auctions. Right now, through the selling of aged equipment, we have about approximately $88,000 in, in an account, again, from just selling old junk that people will buy to go blow up, like I told you the last time, that people, there's a company that comes in and buys our vehicles to blow up in movies. So that's pretty cool, if we can pick them out. You might be able to pick them out. I'll get that fixed. That's part of the HVAC one from before. We have onboard in our DPW about 2,400 pieces of inventory that we have to repair the vehicles, and we also manage two fueling stations, one at DPW and one down, one, a smaller one, at WPC. So the, the police station, fueling station is no longer, and again, everybody's coming to Moody Road and to Todd's place at the very, very last ultimate resort, so. Highway, snow and ice operations, 183 miles. We've got 5,000 catch basins in town. We clean half of them every year per our MS4 permit through, through deep. Street sweeping is starting. Right now, you may see them around. Stormwater compliance, our nine traffic lights we have in town and all the line striping is all part of that, and we have 11 people on, currently onboard for that. RRM, subject of a lot of conversation lately, phone calls to staff. We handle, again, all the municipal solid waste, recycling and yard waste with a transfer station. We're having a, a very, very large household hazardous waste day this year, and with that, we've kind of calculated how many times we engage, again, a barrel, and how many times we, it's about 1.5 million times we actually either pick up a barrel and do that on, that's how many times we pick up things on a yearly basis throughout town. That's how many points of contact we have with, with the public. So a few barrels that we kind of happen to sometimes get lobbed in the truck and crushed, we'll take it, considering 1.5 million times we're touching stuff, we're, we're happy with that. We collect about 14,000 tons of municipal solid waste, 3,500 tons of recycling, and 2,300 tons of bulky waste, believe it or not, at the transfer station comes in and out through us with 20 staff people onboard. And now everybody's favorite topic, water pollution control. It is a 10 million gallon per day treatment facility with 16 lift stations. Todd's responsible for Call Before You Dig, all the process control, equipment maintenance, station maintenance, collection system cleaning, which, if you think about how big Enfield is, we have 210 miles of sewer pipes scattered throughout and about Enfield. Last year, which is a startled, to me, is a startling amount, and I know Gina's already souring because just thinking about it, 1.9 million gallons of, of treated waste last year, and 10 million pounds of sludge was processed. So, and, you can have all this, and I mean everything, including WPC, for a cool $22,0187 broken up into, you can go with 10 annual payments if you want, or 12, depending on what John wants to do, so.
He wants 12.
He wants 12, okay. So that's what we, that's what our budget currently does. So here's our, here's the overall budget roll-up. So our budget increased $658,428, and I'll explain to you in a few minutes why that happened. If you notice, that administration went up. That was for a position and some insurance changes. B&amp;G went up due to utilities. Hold on a second. Yeah, B&amp;G, B&amp;G was utilities and summer help and fuel. Inspection was more parts predominantly. Custodial went down, just moving things around, taking away, it was, an insurance change was the, was the most part of that. Fleets, we, fleet went up again for parts and for fuel. Highway is only fuel, and RRM, that big jump, is for the increase in municipal solid waste and the, and the looming increase for recycling. So we were asked to give a zero increase on the non-payroll side of things. So in the green, you notice we are zero on the bottom right for the entire division, plus, I mean, all the divisions, plus, and also WPC. If we exempt, we are a zero if we exempt the gasoline prices, we know that is going up to $3.25 a gallon for fuel, for both gasoline, gasoline and diesel. Last year was, we were budgeting, I think, $1.90 and $2. Now we're at $3.50, we're, we're budgeting, sorry, $3.25 a gallon for that. MSW is going up $1.50 per ton, so over, at $14,000, at 14,000 tons, it's not that big of an increase. Recycling is projected to go up to $100 a ton, but I'm, I'll talk about that in, in a second. Natural gas is going up, electricity and water, we all have estimates from everywhere, how we're projecting out. So if we exempt gas, diesel, MSW, recycling, that, yes, it did go up by 581,000 on the non-payroll side, but we still zeroed out. If I was to level, if I was to have to zero that out, I'd be losing about 22 to 25 people I would have to cut, because I don't, there's nowhere else to take it from. Recycling, we are working with, or I'm in negotiations with vendor right now, so they, they went away from giving us money, again, four or five years ago, we, we were able to get money for recycling, now we're paying. Now it's even getting worse because there's, the market is, the market is determining that. So most communities are going to a processing fee, that's the $100, is the processing fee. Then we get a share of the revenue from the, from the materials that they take out and clean out of the recycling. So there's an aluminum market, there's a steel market, there's cardboard, there's paper, and whatever is left is junk, and we, we share in that disposal of that, too. So if we were to do something like that, if we signed something today, as of the 29th, we'd be, we'd pay the initial $100 for the, per ton, then we'd be getting back about, about $40, between $30 and $40 per ton today, as of right now. But again, that's not a week from now, that's not a month from now, or a year from now. That changes on a, on a, I'm trying to negotiate changing that on a monthly basis, and that's where we're working with right now. So that's how that whole calculation can happen. So with, without budgeting, if I don't budget $100, and we're, and we're only getting back, you know, $5 or $10 because the markets crash for something more turmoil over, and, you know, across the pond, if you will, or something else happens, we might not get that money, and I, we still might be paying close to $100 per ton. So that's, that's the real killer in this, and that's the 413,000, for the most part, that you see there, along with some fuel increases. So that, that's the biggest hang-up right now, is the majority of that increase is for, is for fuel and for MSW and reci, and the lion's share is recycling, unfortunately. So the key budget, the key takeaways here is that, again, we add a deputy director. With that extra square footage, we funded another position in custodial to cover up, to cover for the, for JFK addition. We had two frozen positions last year, we didn't fund them, we're asking to fund one this year. This budget accounts for a $1.50 per ton increase in MSW, it accounts for the $88 per ton increase in recycling, and the energy and utility increases, and it does support town council goals, and our, our goal here is to, again, is to maintain and improve the infrastructure and provide customer service as best we can with what we have. So that is the, the main crux of it, and if you have any questions, you can look at my doggy and take, smiling away, so. That's the long and short of it, of the budget, is really, there's only a couple of really big additions, and they're monsters, and everything else has been leveled out, so.
Donald, I do have a question. I don't know, I don't know how to raise my hand here. So, you are mayor, if I may ask a question?
Councillor Mangini?
Thank, thank you, Bob. Like I said, I can't raise my hand, but thank you, Donald, for the presentation. I would ask, the PowerPoint was very detailed, very informative, is there any way that you could provide councils with a copy of that PowerPoint?
I, I can send it to, I'll send it to Alan, and she can, she can disperse it through there.
Very good. I appreciate it. Like, this is very detailed and informative. Thank you again.
Deputy Mayor Sikala?
So I was gonna ask the same question, and just a heads up, I'm gonna ask that of every single department head, that we get the presentation. I'd love to have it ahead of time, but if I can't, I'd like to have a copy of it afterwards. So anybody who comes in the next couple of days, I'm gonna ask the same question. So you had the slide up regarding recycling and sort of your estimated costs, so the number that you have there, is that, what number did you base that on, $88 increase?
No, we're paying, we're paying $11.40 something now, or $11.20, I don't remember, we're about $11 right now, plus or minus, so that 88 brings us to 100, budgeting $100.
Isn't that, obviously, that number, your gas, your diesel, your natural gas, electricity, those numbers sort of fluctuate anyway, and you have to, or do you lock them in for the year?
They're locked in.
Oh, good.
The gasoline and diesel are, will be locked in, yes.
Okay, but electricity and, and water, that's not?
Yeah, there is some, there are some ones that are fluctuating, so the only ones we really haven't locked down, but we have been looking at trends, we have been looking at what we're buying right now and how much, it's, it's the natural gas, electricity and water, the other ones are contracted or are locked down.
Okay, all right. That's it. I mean, these numbers really don't surprise me, knowing what was coming, so.
Again, the lion's share of that increase, I mean, if you, if you just take out the RRM portion, it's really nominal, considering, you know, what we're, what we're doing, so it's really a nominal increase.
And you're adding two positions?
We're adding one, we were asking?
One, and then funding the other one.
One custodian and one deputy.
Yeah, okay. Perfect, thanks.
Councillor Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Director Noons, and style points for multiple parts of that. With this $100 arrangement with recycling, what company was, is that, are there alternatives? Is there, you know, multiple potential payment options within that one company? I would love to hear more about that.
Yeah, we're, our current contractor, we're, I'm engaging him on Thursday, there is another company that's interested in Massachusetts that we, we just engaged right now. We did do a study through, we hired an outside person to evaluate, to evaluate the offer that was given, and that person came back and had some wonderful points and some things that I think we, that we should be able to benefit from, benefit from, and try to get that price per, or the processing fee is gonna stay the same no matter what, it's that revenue sharing, we're trying to get more of it to cut the cost down, so.
Thank you. I think it does make sense to essentially plan for the worst by having the $100 number and.
There's times that this model, that the majority of the, the cities and towns are going with, so the processing fee is 100, if the markets are bad and you're disposing of stuff, you might be actually paying more on top of that. So there is the possibility that 100, that's, that's just the starting point, you can go up and can go down, it all depends on that month and/or however it's negotiated with, on that market index.
Councillor Pisner, and then Councillor Ludwig.
I guess my one question would be, you said diesel was somewhere at like $3.49, $3.
Yeah, diesel, we have diesel at 3.25.
Okay, and that's a locked-in fee because that's pretty inexpensive for what diesel's going for right now, if you will?
Yeah, we're paying not even, we're paying under 2 right now.
Okay.
So we're, it's gonna be bid out again, and the East River Energy is where we're getting it from, they gave us the price to, basically, to budget for, and that's what we're budgeting for.
Okay, no, that's great. That's an excellent price from what I'm seeing happen.
Yeah.
That's really where my, I'm looking at that same, if you got that, that's great.
Yep.
Yep, Councillor Ludwig?
Welcome, sir. Catch basins, you said we do clean, we have 5,000, do we do all 5,000 a year, or is it ever on a two-year? How often do we get all of them done on the cycle?
We do half the town one year, the.
So every two years?
Every two years, everything is cleaned, yes.
And that has been, that has been an improvement since in the past, especially with all the water that we've obviously witnessed in the historic rain. You know, I think it's been interesting, as you know, last year with so many people having water in their basements with all the rain, it's not because we're not cleaning out our catch basins.
No, we're, we're mandated to do it, and we're, and we actively do it, and we report that as part of our MS4 compliance.
Which is, you know, very, very great, we're doing all 5,000. So this, we asked this question a few years ago, you mentioned some of the inventory, do we have an inventory in everything that we own in DPW? So how many weed whackers do we have? How many mowers do we have? Did we ever get to that point?
Yeah, we haven't.
We do, so we do. We have that information?
We're, we're working with, when Munis had the asset management program, that was something we started during the summer, is gathering everything, we're, we're doing that, we're pulling off serial numbers on motors and maybe that one above, down, Ellen right now, you know, we, I know, I know the number of that one, so we may be able to help.
If it's not a ton of work, it'd be 40, I'd love to be, see if we have a copy of, if it's a couple page, I don't know if you can do a couple page, you know, what we have for our inventory, just, just curious.
Okay.
Appreciate it. This may be a question for John. What's the, do we have, do we know the balance in our reserves for the DPW fund?
Off the top of my head, for the DPW fund?
For, excuse me, what, water pollution control, I apologize.
It's, I believe it's 2.2 million now.
And do we owe, does that fund owe the Public Works budget any more money? We still, no, we paid that off, correct?
Yes.
Which is pretty, it's pretty important. And we did that last year, if I remember.
Right.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So Donald, just a couple, RRM, sorry, what's RRM stand for?
Refuge and Resource Management.
So this, I apologize for misunderstanding, we just went through where we were charging people for, for more gray barrels, because we knew the charge for the, for the regular trash is going, may go up to whatever it may go up. Is that included in your budget? So if we think it's gonna go from 88 bucks to 150, whatever it may be?
Yeah, hold on a second. So the, the MSW, we are, we, our last year, the contract starts this July 1st, 2022, and now carries to June 30th to 23.
Okay, so it'll be next budget will we see that?
Next budget is gonna be, right, and I'll be bidding that out in December, January of this, of, well, probably January of '23 to get it going, so we'll have it for budget time, what the new numbers will be for MSW.
Yeah, I'll show you where I'm going with this. So I don't, and I apologize, I don't recall us talking about recycling going from $11 a ton to $100 a ton. And again, if I misunderstood, I certainly get it, because we talked about it for a year. So I understand we can sell some of that. So other than fuel, what is driving that? So, and again, we, we're telling people that we want you to recycle, we're giving you more blue barrels for free.
Mm-hmm.
So have we sort of stepped in it a little bit now that we're giving people more blue barrels, and now we're gonna be charged $100 a ton?
We're gonna be charged $100 for processing fee. The biggest thing is trying to get this, have a cleaner waste stream, to have better return on that, to knock it down to $50 or $60 per ton.
Okay, so from, in theory, we're 11 to 50 roughly, if, if we do, right.
Right, but again, is, it's sort of like disaster planning here, because I don't know if I could foresee things, you know?
So dumb question, so knowing what we know about the regular trash, is there a way of, and I know we don't pre-budget, so I'm not saying that, but to sort of, I mean, next, I mean, we're doing it this year with recycling, next year it's gonna be worse with regular trash, assuming that cost is not gonna be under 100. I mean, 85 bucks a barrel is not gonna be able to pay for going from 88 bucks to $150 for, for ton. So is there a way we can look ahead and start doing something this year?
To change the.
Then that to just, I don't know, do we, do we reserve? Do we take, do we start reserving a little bit? Where we plan for that increase? Because next year's budget's gonna be outrageous, if it's, if it goes from $88 a ton to say 140. Again, I understand you're gonna negotiate.
We, I, I think we could have savings if, again, if we got any money back.
Right.
We're say, we're saving, and maybe, again, I don't know if John would allow that to be, either be saved or rolled over or put in, or you folks would.
I don't know if by the generally accepted counting principle, we can do that, but.
So even if we, if we got $25 for it, times that much.
It's still something, instead of going from 88 bucks.
Right, and that's, yeah.
And then going from $11 to 100, it's a big change.
I understand. It was, it was sticker shock to.
Right, no, I'm saying, so.
All involved.
What if, what if the 150 is, is being conservative, maybe it's $200 a ton?
Well, right now, the MSW is, is in the 95 to 105 dollar range.
Right.
And that's what I'm negotiating with right now, also with, with our vendor, because the residue portion, which he's, which was calculated at 20% residue, which is 20% garbage, is at $95 a ton, and we're paying that same company 8150 right now. So that's where, I'm trying to negotiate with him to bring that number down, so we'll have, so that processing fee will come down accordingly.
Because my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you know, next year, even, next year, we're gonna struggle to find any vendor that can actually dispose of this. In theory, I use the word locally, just meaning within maybe a radius, radius that, you know.
There's a company out in Auburn that has a local, local transfer station in Springfield, where communities bring the stuff to Springfield, they themselves haul it with 100-yard trailers to Auburn, and then after that, they, they do what they gotta do.
So you still think that might be an option next year?
Yeah, that might be an option this year. Where we are, and I am in talks with them right now.
Okay, all right. Because I'm just saying, we know it's coming.
Yes.
I gotta admit, it, just saying, it's tough when we're telling people we're gonna give you more blue barrels, which we should, I mean, again, it's the right thing to do, but by the way, it's gonna cost the town potentially a 90, an $80 increase in your disposal fees. Just saying, I know, but it's a tough.
I know, it's, but again, it's, it's, I guess.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's just the timing.
I'd rather pay, I mean, unfortunately, I'd rather pay 50 than, than.
No, I know, I'm not arguing with you.
Than 85, than 83 for MSW, if people are dumping more, I'd rather pay, unfortunately, unfortunately, I'd rather pay 50 instead of 83.
I'm not arguing with you, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just saying the way it shows, that's all I'm saying, is that, you know, technically, if we don't get that 50 bucks, we'll be paying more for recycling than we could be for regular trash disposal.
That's not, that's not uncommon. We're the, the town that I live in, they pay $20 more per ton for recycling, and it's mandated by state law.
Is it?
Yes.
Town manager, please.
I think, to complement the line of questioning from Councillor Ludwig, a lot of what we're faced with is the state of Connecticut's comprehensive waste management strategy, which unfortunately is not conducive to changing some of the ways that municipalities do business in processing waste. And this has been a discussion point since it was adopted in 2016, and basically, you can, I can send out the link to the document. They want all municipalities to divert 60% of their waste by 2024, which is a very difficult thing to do in the face of what is challenging commodities pricing. So, you know, cardboard goes up, paper products go down, plastics are up, it doesn't matter because they have refused to change how we recycle. So if all of you remember when recycling started, the what's in the bucket, what's out of the bucket, it's the same list from 20-something years ago. So right now, glass, you can't give glass away, and glass also has the very dubious distinction of ruining a lot of recycling batches. So you're actually trying to pay to process, but because of food contamination, you know, think your, you know, sauce jars or things like that, that people don't rinse out, it can literally ruin batches, so you're not even getting paid for that. The state of Connecticut, unfortunately, has not really listened to the voices of the municipalities that have been on these task forces, because they want to link all of this to, you know, creation of anabolic digesters, food waste processing, climate issues, and all of these are great, but when it comes down to the role of a municipality to process this level of waste, it's somewhat unrealistic. So we not only have all of these challenges from a regulatory standpoint, we're also up against state law that even if we wanted to get rid of glass, we can't, because we, it would be against the law to do so. So this is a continuing strategy that we have to look at locally in the face of all of these, frankly, barriers and other issues that are put on us from state mandates.
And again, I agree. I've been reading the MDC stuff, and it's, you know, they're going nuts, so my only suggestion, if we could, is that we, we do make this public. I mean, I think we need to, people, just so they, I mean, there's some confusion, I know you're getting the calls in the barrels, you know, and, and the same thing with the brown barrels, too, just explaining to people, you know, why, you know, it's actually cheaper for us that if you bring it to the, the transfer station, I mean, it's a great service that we provide with the brown barrels. I mean, one of the best services, I think, we provide it for municipalities, I know other towns don't do this, they actually charge to do it. So just those things that we need to reinforce, that, hey, look, yeah, I know your pain if you want more than two brown barrels, but it's actually more expensive for us to do it, pick it up at your, you know, in front of your house, as opposed, if, if you're able to, bring it to the transfer station, you know, and unfortunately, maybe wait in a line a little bit, but still, it's not that inconvenient. So those little nuances, I think, are important, you know, through what you're presenting here, and same thing with the, just so people understand, because I think you're right, you're getting calls, you're under Bronnivix, I know a lot of people upset about the gray barrels, just so, again, just to remind people that this stuff changes pretty quickly, and a lot of it is out of our hands, unfortunately.
And if the negotiations go well, and this comes down, and we're able to, to move things around and solidify that, we can, I, you know, we can adjust through the next few weeks, you know, through the budget process.
I think it's important, just, this is stuff, I think, we need to make sure we let people know, because it's important. No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, it sounds like this, this strategy, there's a lot of uncertainty just regionally, across multiple states around this, it sounds. Sounds like this provides the best opportunity to hedge against that uncertainty. Ideally, we're able to recover more money. You know, it's cheaper to do recycling than it is to do solid waste as possible. It won't be, but this sounds like it's the best chance of ensuring that we're getting more money for our our ton, as it were. Is that right?
Yes, we've this is our our best option right now. And again, the the consultant that reviewed that had a very long. It's in still in draft form right now, but it was a very long report of talking. I asked several questions about things again, like can we take the recycling like we originally did over at either at, you know, at the transfer station? Then haul it ourselves because recycling is light compared. So if like a there are regular trash trucks, those only hold about between four to six tons of recycling, which is you don't want to drive to Berlin. Because again, we did a we did a study saying to drive to Berlin, you're going to we're not going to get the the monetary gain. But if we went with 100 yarder filled with that, now we're now it's a different ballgame, but that still didn't work out. So all those like all those options were looked at and examined by that consultant, whose only job in his entire career is waste management. He came up the recommendation, and this is one that he's also recommended to go ahead is pursue this type of arrangement with whether our current vendor or another vendor that's willing.
Okay, Counselor Finger.
Donald, years ago, we had we used to do this separately where we did newspapers and cardboard separately one week, and then we did the glass and bottles the following week. Is that something that was looked at too? Because we do get money on that.
I go back to dual stream. This is called. So what we're in now is single stream recycling. So everything gets dumped, everything gets placed in this way dumped. I think it's placed into the green into your into your green barrels. But going back to dual stream, that means we'd either have to have more routes or again, give out more barrels. One is strictly for paper and car, or we go back to the blue, you know, the little guys back there and all that kind of stuff like that. That was looked at and that was a no, if you can get based on markets and and the like. Because now for taking out like like Ellen said, glass is is a nightmare. That's just automatic trash. That's nobody does anything with that anymore. That's just basically disposed of right away off the top. So having most of that now is glass and it's heavier and all that kind of stuff. I I asked it, hey, can we just send out an edict saying throw your glass in the trash? And that was met with a resounding no because we have to because we're mandated. I just say, you know, trying to think creative, right, John, trying to think creative, you know, maybe just one thing out of the waste stream. And but no, I got shot down on that. So, yep.
Okay. All right, Don, thank you very much for tonight's presentation. Just looking at your your key points in your takeaways. I think one of the slides showed the amount of money that your department has brought in. You could go back to that.
Yep. That was our building inspection division.
Right. Just just looking at and then the construction value, you know, it's been pretty consistent the last few years with that and the amount of building permits and fees that are that are going in there. So so I think that part of it, you know, it's nice to see and and people to see the amount of money that's generated, you know, within your department. So, you know, thank you for that and, you know, telling us your, you know, what accomplishments that, you know, you're, you know, you have three three big departments there that you're, you know, dealing with here. And so when I look at, you know, the adding of a deputy director, which we definitely need, you know, especially with all these improvements that that are going to be taking place in the next, you know, this year and the following years, that that is a key position. You know, and I'm looking at the staff that you have like at buildings and grounds. I mean, those guys work really hard. You got a great crew of people in all of your departments. And sometimes I think you're understaffed and you know that you are. And and I don't see on your budget that, you know, I guess if you had a wish list of, you know, wanted to add more people to your department. Because I I know buildings and grounds, the the work that, you know, your wood shop people do. You know, they are really, I can't say, well, they are overworked. And, you know, they were they could work 24/7 on all your projects. So it's good to see that, you know, you're going to add a custodian because JFK is bigger, you know, Enfield High is bigger. You know, so, you know, if there's a need for additional staff. You know, let, you know, you know.
I think the biggest thing, the first thing that comes to mind is just having an H a full an HVAC person, which we cannot fill. Steve can attest to the current state of the employment market and trying to trying to get folks to stay here, number one. And number two, try to, you know, get people in. And Steve and I are experiencing some challenging right now, some challenges to fill the my the other deputy director position. Never mind the one that I'm asking for. We still haven't got to that point. It's been four or five months. We've done some things through the, you know, through council, which I'm grateful for for raising, you know, the salary up and things like that. But just finding people to come to work and, you know, again, if Steve wants to jump in, I.
Yeah, there's a few key positions that we're having difficulty. And it's not just Enfield. It's I talk to my colleagues and throughout the state and HVAC people are just the private sectors, you know, they control their own destiny. And it's such a skill set that, yeah, there's a lot of, for whatever reason, people are migrating into certain fields. So the ones that are available are getting scooped up and it's a there's a lot of poaching going on.
Yeah, Todd's having difficulty, you know, WPCF finding. Again, Todd's a grade four. That's the highest you can have in state of Connecticut. Trying to find one to come or never mind a two and a three, those are almost that you don't even.
Can't even find a two or a three, never mind a four, right?
Can attest to that, too. I mean, we're working, you know, we have, you know, we have one, four, we have Todd, we have a three, we have two twos, and we have ones and zeros. The zeros are going for their test right now. So we have a younger staff that Todd has to train, you know, they're not the experienced staff, and you just can't find those folks to come here. And it's very challenging to just to get kids today to come into, you know, into a that type of environment where, you know, his stuff is not pleasant. I can tell you, I can attest to that, and it's not fun working down there. It's, you know, it's he's smiling because he deals with it every day, but it's gross. And the look on Gina's face still, even just talking about it makes her sour, so.
Well, all your work is greatly appreciated, and I know that, you know, all of your staff that you work very hard.
Certainly pass it along.
And thank you for this very detailed presentation that you gave. I know Deputy Mayor Saccalo has another.
I did. I'm sorry. And this just sort of triggered my memory. So I know that I had mentioned this, I think, to you, Ellen, before. And so seasonal employees, I know last year when we talked about this, it was difficult to find any. And I I believe that there is either an 18 or older, or they need to be 18 to do most of the work. So the sort of when you were talking about not being able to find people, I think this is sort of, like you said, global. But Enfield High has, and I know we talked about this last year, has sort of career center days where people can come in and they talk about specific industries and they have hiring events. And if we haven't reached out to the staff over there, to Chris or whoever's in the the career center, I really think that would be a benefit to allowing some of these kids who are 17 and 18, you know, for the summer, before they go to college or before they start whatever other adventures they have in their lives. If they want to stay here and work in Enfield in the town that they grew up in, I think that's a great way to start to foster maybe employees that would stay here long term, right? Not saying that's always going to happen, but having a partnership with Enfield High for seasonal work. If we do not have, we absolutely should. And I know I did mention that last year, and I know it was very difficult to find seasonal employees last year. So I'm going to mention it again this year.
Budget constraints helped that solidify it because we took we didn't fund that portion. We did fund some this year. Steve has, I think we engaged, yeah.
For like the summer help and and stuff because, I mean.
Yeah, we haven't been getting the applicant pool like we're used to. But I I think you hear your point, though, is if we can nurture or foster people as they're graduating or getting close to it and put them on a career path.
I mean, there's 17 and 18 year olds who are looking for summer work and whether they, you know, before they go to college or before they go off or they have one more year of of high school. I I think that is it's here in Enfield. That is a place we should start. All along the same lines, do we have partnerships from DPW in the town with sort of as NUNTUC, Manchester Community College, Goodwin College, Cheney Tech? Those types of programs who might be able to bring in even the younger entry level people that you're looking for in some of the hard to fill positions? So if we don't, and this may not just be a question for you, maybe a question for HR, maybe a question for the town manager, for everybody involved. But if we don't have some sort of partnership or liaison with those either trade schools or certification programs throughout some of the colleges and the schools close to us, I think we absolutely should because that also may help bring in entry level work that can sort of work through and make a career out of being here in Enfield.
Yeah, I'm sure they must have job boards. There are some people that are the and then you can correct me if I'm wrong. But getting someone like entry level, they would start out like an apprentice or so. They would need to before they go up to like a journeyman, is it what's the scale like?
It depends on the trade, right?
Depends on the trade.
Yeah, well, yeah, WPC would be different. I'm just thinking the HVAC.
Right, HVAC. I mean, those are those are trades that there are few and far between people who are going into those trades right now. So it doesn't surprise me that it's difficult to find. But that's why I think it's all that much more important for us to have a leg in or a partnership with these surrounding schools. Or even if it's just, I mean, trade schools or as NUNTUC probably has certification programs that they have. So I would really, really encourage us to look into that if we haven't already.
And to your point, not only is HVAC, you know, it's a separate thing and electrical, we have we have one and we have two in one. We have Butch and you folks have he's he is you folks are very fortunate to have Butch on staff.
Worth his weight in gold. Absolutely.
He does a lot of things and again, so that's why we'd like to, again, without with the amount of square feet that you've seen that we have here. We, you know, we should be in the probably two to three HVAC people.
Can he bring an apprentice? Well, yeah, we've talked we've talked about internships before. I've been, I mean, I feel like I've said this a couple of times, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was going to mention. I was exactly going to piggyback on you and say an internship is out there because they have to do something before they get their certification. So if we can work with schools that are local and and try to bring somebody in as an intern, you know, and kind of groom them. Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, so again, internships that I think.
The only thing with an internship, they would be shadowing Butch, who's probably busy as it is. So he's gonna have to, yeah.
And I think, sorry, I think you do it right, you gotta pay him.
Excuse me, Counselor Ludwig.
You got, I mean, I think people just got to you got to pay them. That's what corporations are doing. Everyone's the job marketing up here is the same for everybody. But a lot of what a lot of corporations do, they're paying some of these kids to again, so when they get out of school, boom, they right, they go right to, you know, they already have a job. So you almost have to take it a step further if that's the risk because where we have to pay some of these kids some salary, whatever it may be. And then, hey, look, if you complete whatever you're going to complete, you're going to you're going to you got a job day one, whatever it is. I think it's got to be a step further than an internship because they can get it anywhere now. And a lot of and Steve said the corporations are paying kids now to to have internships. And then they hire them right in the spot when they're done out of college or whatever they're doing. So I mean, I think you actually got to take it a step further and put it in your budget, which, you know, folks got to be willing to spend, you know, to do it.
Counselor Finger.
Well, one of the issues you're going to have is when these kids come out of school and they're going to try to get an apprenticeship, they have to be instructed, taught by a licensed individual, which we do not have as far as HVAC is considered. Okay, we don't have it. So in order for them to progress in this field, A, we don't pay these people enough because the private sector houses takes them right out of school and gives them, let's say, to start $35 an hour, $40 an hour. All right, that's the problem we had keeping some of our HVAC people in the past because we weren't able to to give more, get the good people. You know, I mean, we had some, but the ones that were super qualified, because you got a lot of old systems in this town, they got to have knowledge of you. You just can't be fresh out of school and just think you're going to be able to take over this, you know, the town with all this HVAC. But they have to be they have to be trained under a licensed individual is what we don't have. That's something that I think that in my opinion, if you want to look at something like that, it's not a bad idea. It's a great idea, but you're going to have to hire somebody and pay them to be that person to do all that training. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Don.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions, comments? Counselor Santinella.
Just just one question. So being new to the process a little bit, what may not have made the list? What are do you have a wish list of things that if you could have added them into the budget, you would have? Do you I mean, as we go through this process, I've got to believe that there are things that you may have wanted to have that didn't make the first pass. I mean, do we have, as we be start to get down the process and start to prioritize things? There may be some things that are missing from your presentation that we could potentially add back in. Is there a wish list of things that we might want to consider? The HVAC person, for example, whatever, if that's a critical position that we don't have and having that person then begets having interns who then could potentially be employees? Like, that seems like that might be a important role that we might want to look at if we can make room for that. And are there other things that were not included here that we might want to consider?
Again, I think the the primary one is HVAC and parts for we did include parts. But again, with the complexity of today's vehicles that we have, we're always searching for more part money for repairs and things. There's nothing as simple these days on a car. I mean, you just pop your hood and you can just, I mean, there is nothing simple about repairing a vehicle. So it's just little things like, you know, you we try to have as much in stock. We do as much as we can in in-house. But again, we're always towards the end, like right now, we're we're transferring like crazy. So that's one of the the two biggest ones right off the top is that and more stuff for facilities. Because our infrastructure is not, other than, you know, newly remodeled JFK and then a little older Enfield High School, all of our stuff is aging. Everything it every day, just there isn't anything really new coming on. So there's there's a lot of infrastructure needs for our buildings. It's just it was a great start with the roofs, and now we just got to take it another step, so.
So Donald, just on the HVAC person, what is the market salary for an HVAC person in the public sector? What are we talking about $50,000 or $200,000 or what is that?
I don't know, but I don't I don't think like $40 an hour is out of the question.
Well.
I know, just saying, I mean, a newbie right out of school, I don't think, you know, I I really don't know. I haven't.
At least we've had our HVAC position open for I don't know how many years now and we.
It's been since I've been here.
Yeah.
Since I started.
Maybe had a couple of bites, but then usually there's issues with the person, so.
We've had, there was, when I was when I was upstairs, not in my role I was now, there were two and they didn't last very long.
All right.
Didn't last very long.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry, one more and I'll stop talking, I promise. So is the HVAC person not in the budget or it's in the budget and just not filled, but it's funded?
It's there, we just could never.
There, it's just not funded. So is your answer, your response that I misunderstand? Are you looking you would ideally want a second one?
I want to fill one.
Right, so your wish list is to have the one that's already funded.
Or make an adjustment and along with along with.
Okay.
I guess along with the electrician position to get to get the trades back up to where we should be considering the amount of square footage that we have in town.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Are you good?
That's my point. If we're not budgeting enough or paying enough to fill that position, then that's a problem, right? If we can't be competitive, that's that's a problem.
Yes, that's what the problem is.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Don.
Go ahead. Want to see the doggy again? You good? All right, well, that's that part. All right, so.
Okay, I just got to add a little bit more on the WP on the WPC fund. If you remember, the the water pollution facility project is a $36 million project. It is funded through a clean water fund loan of $23,169,235. A clean water fund grant of $5,658,559. The balance is through bonding, okay? So the project is nearly complete. We're still working on the BERM portion, and once that's completed, it will be done. We we actually should have been completing it and starting our bond payment or our clean water fund payments on this year, this fiscal year 22. However, we we did because of the BERM. However, we, we did, because of the BERM project, got an extension on it, and so we will beginning, beginning next year, we will be starting pay downs on that. If you, as the people who are on the council in the past will remember, I've been talking about increasing the budget because, because we know we're having these debt payments come, come due soon. One of the issues with this is the clean water fund requires an upfront 1/20th principal payment due at the inception of the loan. So that's budgeted in this year's budget, that's about $1,160,000. That payment, my, my current plan is to take that out of the fund balance that we have, because it is a one-time payment, and I don't think, you know, we, we should have sufficient fund balance in there. But then we will, then we will start, we continue to pay pretty much where we are in CIP transfers this year, and then slowly ramp those up as we figure out methods of funding the, the different capital projects that are needed for the water pollution control facility. Next one there?
Capital. I don't think we want questions on.
Okay, is there any questions on that? You'll see that, you'll see a rather large increase in the budget for WPIC, or WPC this year, and that's due to the, that, that main, that principal payments.
We have Todd here, if you wanna ask any fun stuff. Maybe Gina's got a few questions for Todd, so.
Okay.
Good? All right. Can Todd depart? Okay. You don't know who that is?
Sorry. I'm Todd. We treated that 2 billion gallons of water last year, we're probably gonna do the same if not more this year. No permit violations, but I'm sure he pays the taxes.
Todd has been with us for two years now.
Todd is probably the most valuable person in this room right now with his number four license, licensed for, so. We, he came from Yukon, I think, and we're, we're very fortunate to have him, because there's probably, I, I count in this many hands how many there are in the state of Connecticut like that.
Absolutely, well, welcome.
Yeah. I can't hear anything. Donald promised there's one in order, though.
I had to repost our entry level operator one position, just to show you how bad the market is. Our entry level position is no license, all you need is a CDL, and we will train you. We will purchase the education, we will, we will do whatever it takes to get you through to get your license. We had one qualified applicant, we had to put it back out there, we're up to two now. So for two months, we're trying to get three people even interview for an entry level position. Then I saw in the news this morning that 4.4 million people quit their jobs last month. Hospitality, retail, and local and state governments is where they're all quitting their jobs from. So, I don't know what that tells us, I'm not an expert in HR, I'm an expert in wastewater, I'm afraid, so.
You don't think about Todd until, until you, until something doesn't flush, so.
Can you ask what the increase was?
Yeah, yeah, Don, could you just explain again what the increase in the WPC budget?
Was it on that slide?
John, you, you said it was an increase?
Yeah, you said we were gonna see an increase in the budget.
I, well, I see it's 1/20th of the loan value.
Yeah.
Right, and that, that'll be, there will be that, plus you'll see that, once we make that, that payment, you also are gonna have monthly payments that will, principal and interest that will equal about the same amount. So it's basically $2.3 million worth of increase, just due to the, the debt financing for this fiscal year. And next fiscal year, the balloon payment obviously goes away, so that will go down, and it'll still be about $1.1 million next fiscal year, in fiscal year 2024.
So the 2.3 is the, including the balloon payment?
Correct.
One time shot, yeah.
Right, and the slide that Donald had before with the total WPC expenses was really excluding this portion of it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yep, Counselor Ludwig.
I was wondering if you could just give us a little story, when the 22 million water, gallons of water went through the plant last August during the hurricane? I mean, I know you guys did, I mean, this is your chance to show what your staff, I mean, it was, I mean, water was all over town, and you folks, I mean, if you actually went, I can't remember where it was, and I, you probably know more than me, I'm almost positive it was in south, south, south mid-Atlantic area where something happened, and the entire, almost the entire town was underwater because of the rain. And I don't, I'm not blaming it on their water pollution control plant, but there was, if you read the articles, and yet, what, I think it was three days, two days, we had 22 million gallons of water go through that plant?
That maxed out our flow meters, our flow meters couldn't read any more than that.
And, I mean, it, I mean, and the fact that we were able to, I mean, I know there was flooding, I mean, so, but it wasn't catastrophic flooding.
We have some work to do in the future on our collection system, it's, it's very old.
Right.
It's, that was direct inflow, that's not I and I where it creeps into the pipes, that means it rained and it instantly hit. Every one of the pipes in Old Thompsonville were full to capacity. That was a rough day, when we actually had to shut down Amtrak for approximately two to three hours, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, because the system couldn't handle.
Bottom line, Thompsonville wasn't underwater, that's the bottom line.
Yes.
Yep.
And we were able to keep all the lift stations running, power to everything, my staff worked for about 24-hour streak.
Fantastic, it was, people don't realize how much that, what you guys did that, that weekend, or whenever it was, I can't remember if it was a weekend, but, you know, I remember we were scared to death that Thompsonville was gonna be underwater alone because of the pipes.
He came back from vacation.
Yeah?
I flew from, I, I almost flew from Newport, I drove very fast.
The only thing wrong, you don't have, you don't have a brown hat on, I'm surprised he let you wear a Patriot hat.
Sorry.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Mathewson, Todd Mathewson.
Counselor Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Merritt, and thank you, Mr. Mathewson, it's, it's really an important thing. Everybody in town uses water pollution control in a, in a way that we just, we, we take for granted, and it's incredibly important. I wonder if you could speak a little bit more towards, so we, we need some work and collection, what are some other things that we could do to make our system more future-proof, hard, you know, harden it a bit? I know that there are some older pumps, and we're, we're looking at using some of this COVID money to expedite that a little bit, but there are other things, I would love to hear that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're working on doing a lot of sewer lining, we just finished up Moody Road, because we're gonna be repaving, Donald's folks are gonna be doing the road next year, I know, actually, it's this year, I'm sorry. And so we wanted to ensure it with the structural integrity of, of what the pipes were underneath the road, so we wouldn't have to go back and dig it up. I actually reviewed some of the video before I came here, looks like we're in good shape, so we'll actually be lining that pipe with fiberglass lining. That'll extend that pipe that was installed in 1969 and give it additional life. We do have sections of town where the collection system is sold, that's actually past its life expectancy, where we're actually gonna have to dig up the road and replace it all. Another issue we have is laterals. We own, from the sewer line, the lateral going to the person's house to the property line, and then they own the rest of the portion of that pipe. Very difficult for us, because we don't have a means to see what our, what that condition of pipe is, so we're working on putting together a package to buy a proper camera system, so we don't only inspect the sewer lines, we can expect, inspect all the pipe that we actually own, and try to head off problems before they occur, because a lot of these, in, in so many sections of town, they use orange berg, it's basically a cardboard, and they're, they're collapsing all over the place. And when that happens, we only find out when the person calls and says, "Mr. Mathewson, I'm sorry, but I'm walling in my own feces, can you please get up here and help me?" And it becomes an emergency call, and we wanna try to prevent that going forward. So we're trying to put means and methods in place to do better at that.
What is it, if you don't mind me asking, what does a camera system like that run?
Oh, quarter million to half a million dollars, depending on what degree of system you get.
Yes, so, so it comes with, again, it has its own, it basically has its own vehicles, and in the back, there's, they have the TVs that run in, and the cameras all come back off of that. And again, like, like Todd was saying, it goes down the main, but then when it finds the lateral, it could actually shoot another little camera out, and it actually goes up the lateral. So when, when folks call WPC and say, again, they got a blockage, and we say, well, it's on your property, they'll call a plumber, and the plumber says, well, it's 22 feet away, where do we know where that is, and is that really ours? So then sometimes we wind up digging up the road and digging up the lateral, and when you, sometimes we didn't have to, but some, since we're there, we saw a problem, we replaced it anyways. So we're just trying to avoid going from the main to the property line as much as humanly possible, but we have no means to do so, because we will not go in people's cellars, pop their clean out, and stick a camera in there, because there's just too much liability involved with that. So we're not, we don't do that per protocol, so this camera system will have us staying on our side, doing our things, we'll be able to inspect all that things to help kind of alleviate that. We did get a quote, we are putting it in CIP for this year for, for that, for the camera, and it's, again, it's, it's mid threes to be on, you know, it depends on what system you get. But without a lateral camera, having, having a, a main camera is wonderful, but the lateral camera would resolve a tremendous amount of things, and it would be a lot quicker for us and a lot quicker for the resident, because they won't have to get a plumber, or then have to have that call out sometimes, too, that they're getting an emergency call out at X hour of the day or night, it's an emergency call out for them, and so it'll hopefully cut down on some costs with that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we're good, great.
Any questions, more questions for Todd? I'll let everybody know who it is.
Yes, 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 I do.
Keep up your great work, Todd. Counselor Mangini, yes. I didn't see your hand.
No, I, I know, I tried to get that up, but it won't happen to it. I, I do have a question, I don't know, well, I should direct the question to, maybe, John, years ago, we had an issue with the prison system, where they were supposed to be reimbursing our town X amount of dollars per prisoner for use of water, for use of our facilities, and I'm wondering if we've ever made any headway in collecting any funds from the Connecticut Department of Corrections in that area?
Counselor Mangini, thank you for reminding me, because that's one of the other funding sources for the water pollution control facility, was a payment from the State Department of Corrections, and we did receive $2.5 million for, for this project from the state. That is, that money was received, and it went towards the project.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, because when this situation had occurred, me and Senator Kissel both offered to shut off the system, so it would back up, I was joking, we really weren't gonna do that, but it made the state realize that they did have responsibility to our town, so I'm happy to hear that they've come forward and owned up to their responsibilities. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you, Doug.
And thank you, Todd, greatly appreciate it. Okay, next, CIP.
All right, so, the, the FY23 capital improvement plan is currently in the works, but we're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit what we did for last year, for those, kind of a little, little primer on, on how the process works. So, by the way, this is an 1855 map of Enfield, by the way, for those cases you're wondering. So the, the capital improvement plan will include things for facilities, architectural engineering things, equipment, parks and recreation, and stuff for the police. So, this is where I hand it off to John, and he's gonna talk about some things.
So, this was the, what we funded through CIP for fiscal year 22, and we were funding, you know, the maximum funding that we can, in '22 was $689,000 without going to referendum, okay? Some of these projects, like the Hazerville Memorial Roof, the Eli Whitney Roof, we put the, the total amount in the expenditure, expenditure account, but then we got reimbursed from the state, or we will get reimbursed from the state after we complete the project for 65% of that, actually maybe a little bit more, but I usually tend to budget a little bit more conservatively for these things. South River Street Bridge, this is another one that, that we had funded at the max, but it was originally scheduled to be about, what was it, about $600,000, and then with state requirements, ended up being about $1,003,000, and I think it's still growing, so we're probably, we were gonna add some more into it for this year as well. Orlando Dry, yeah, it was, Tony, Orlando, yeah, the, these ones are, are the ones, they're, they're major projects, they should start in fiscal year '23, as long as we end up getting the funding for those. And then, in addition to that, we ended up with all these other items, miscellaneous, softball fields, splash pad parkmen, these are all things that we funded, and we ended up, ending to use, would, end up with a total CIP of about $6.5 million. Most of, a lot of this stuff was what we were, we were actually funding from our fund balance, and we'll go through a calculation of what we're, have for fund balance that we can use to apply in another slide here.
Oh. That's my dog. Isn't she cute? I was asking, I should ask the capital part, but John, this is how we came up with the policy calculation.
Right, so the fund balance policy says, we need to maintain what they call unassigned fund balance of 9% of our total expenditures. It actually says general fund expenditures. So our total expenditures, if you look in the budget for FY22, are 146 million, a little over 500,000. That includes the amounts the general fund transfers to social services funds, EMS fund, and library funds. And I back those numbers out, because, and once again, I'm kind of more conservative when it comes to calculating this, and I add the total expenditures for social services, EMS, and library. The grand total of that is 153 million, just under 153,200,000. What's on the next one?
Oh, my dog.
So, we don't have the, so the, oh, I'm sorry, it is down there at the bottom. So the, the, that, the 9% of that total is 13 million, just under 13,800,000, and that's the policy, the unassigned fund balance that we need to maintain. It's essentially a rainy day fund, okay? That's amounts available for emergencies. What we actually have for our audited financial statements is $24,772,000, okay? Now, the, 24 million, when we do the audited financial statements, the auditors take out any planned usage of fund balance out of the unassigned balance, and they put it into another called assigned fund balance, okay? So that, so all of our unassigned, or our, our capital that we were gonna take out of fund balance this year is already out of that number, okay? So our minimum fund balance policy, the 13,800,000, that leaves us with an excess of $10,984,000. Okay? Now, since then, we added a few more policies, expenditures to the, to the unassigned, to the, the planned usage of fund balance. Some of these things were done last summer and last fall, we added an additional $1.3 million to that. So our grand, our net excess fund balance right now is $9.6 million, okay? As you, we've been talking for the last couple of years, we have a lot of aging buildings. As you, we've been talking for the last couple of years, we have a lot of aging buildings, we have a lot of, a lot of projects that need to get done on those buildings. Some of that is the roofs that we're taking care of in the referendum, some of those are just other projects that need to get done. You know, we've got aging parking lots, we've got aging all kinds of things. So my current plan is we're going to go higher than we have normally done for our, for our CIP transfer, okay? Because we need to start catching up on this stuff. Some of it, I'm going to be starting to use a little bit of this excess fund balance. I know we talked about using fund balance last fiscal year, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I'll have it for tomorrow night. But we planned on using about $8 million, or over $8 million of fund balance during fiscal year '21, we didn't end up using anywhere near that amount, I think it was closer to $2 million. So even though we plan on it, we budget fairly conservatively, we're still going to plan on, you know, using some fund balance, I hope not to be actually using as much as we have budgeted for FY22 as well. So our current plan is, like I said, we're going to start using some additional fund balance, we're going to try to budget for more capital projects, and the other portion is to be assigning some of that to the ARPA funding, which will then benefit taxpayers by not, you know, obviously we don't have to raise the mill rate if we can fund those through that. And we're also, some of the, the water pollution control pump stations, that's some of the items that we talked about using in the ARPA funding. Also trying to see if the school can help us out with any of these other projects as well. So we have meetings coming up, we don't have a final actual number for this year yet because we're still pulling together amounts from, we're analyzing this and trying to come together with a lot of different, different funding sources, so that should be ready for next Any questions?
Counselor Shanthenell.
And that's a German Short Air pointer, which kind of dog I have.
John, yeah, so we don't have, we don't know what the total budget number is right now, correct?
For CIP, correct.
For, for the town's total budget? We don't have the?
For '23.
For '23, we don't have it, yeah, I have the last, I have the last one sitting right here.
Okay.
We don't know what that total budget is at this point.
Right.
But we'll have that next week.
Yes.
Okay, and we, do we have a total expenditure for CIP at this point, or we're still rolling that part up?
We're still rolling that, that information together, so.
Okay, and my last question, so, and where are we on the debt side? What is our total accumulated debt and debt service for, or what's, I know what it is for 2022, what's it going to be for 2023?
Give me one second here.
Just in case you're wondering, Remy is John's dog, and the white dog that you saw before was Hula and the other, the Dotson was happy.
So while John's looking that up, just as a regrouping for where we are with CIP, we have all of the requests in from all of the departments, that is that master list that got sent out last week to all of you. It was a very rough cut that was attached to the end of the scan in advance of this week's meetings. So as John indicated, we have the opportunity to leverage a bunch of different resources in order to stretch these dollars. The need, the capital improvement project list, is extremely large, so it makes sense that we're going to work in conjunction with these American Rescue Plan funds, with existing CIP resources, and also with the Board of Education's entry into alliance funds, alliance district funding opportunities. They have a means in order to put some of those funds towards school facilities. Superintendent Dreisak is attending his first alliance meeting tomorrow, we are meeting with him on Friday. In addition to that, the state of Connecticut has made available, through some of their funding mechanisms with their ARPA money, opportunities for HVAC and other types of facility improvements. So the strategy is going to be, how do we coalesce all of those various funding sources into one list so that we know that every dollar we're spending is being stretched to take care of as many projects as possible? We have also had some strategy meetings about how to expedite some of those projects, and you've all sat through the meetings and I'm sure you've had the phone calls. The Enfield Street parking lot is a mess, Barnard is another one that has major issues. So now we're looking at, not only where are we going to get all this funding, and how are we going to kind of corral it for best purposes and best use, but also can we partner some of those funds using what can be allocated up to the threshold, plus other funding sources to start those projects now? And I think that it's fair to say that we're probably not the only community that's looking at some of these strategies, so one of the challenges is going to be shuttle-ready, so that when we are ready to say, okay, we're going to partner these parking lots together, and we need a contractor to do both, there are some options that we're looking at, including state contract, which could expedite. There are some opportunities to package some of that bidding so that a contractor goes, well, you know what, I could spend four weeks with all of, with being stationed there with all of my equipment and do three jobs instead of one job in another community. So there's all of these things that is really kind of a chess game in terms of getting sure that those projects are done over the summer. Our goal is to have as much project ready and ready to go from a bidding perspective, as well as a project perspective for July 1st, to really hit the ground running as soon as the kids exit the school buildings.
Okay, the total debt service, including interest and principal, this also includes estimated interest payments for any bonding that we do this summer for current projects Remember, we had the high school project included in that, that includes the JFK project that's been bonded to date, that includes a $60 million, actually $57.5 million that we were allowed to bond for the Rhodes 2015 project, that includes the, there's still some leftover bonding for Rhodes 2010, I think we're done with 2005, with that one, I think, but, so.
Does that include the money that we just went to referendum in November?
That would not, because that money, that money will be coming on over the next probably five years.
Got it, okay, thanks.
I did projections with that, one of the items that impacts our, our bond, S and P numbers, the AA rating, bond rating that we have, is that when we approach $16 million in debt service, then we could be, so I projected out all of our bonding and we are not there yet, so, including with oncoming debt as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, John.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think we're, anybody have any other questions? I think we are done.
So as a wrap-up, we are going to send out the PowerPoint from tonight to the council. I'm going to also include the link to the state DEP Materials Management Strategy in case anybody wants to look at that, to see what some of our challenges are. We are going to circulate to the town council the publicity piece that we've been preparing about the barrel cost issues for the public. And we also are in the process of sending information over to the guidance departments about our seasonal employment, and I can share that, that's going to be posted with the guidance counselors, but it's also going to be a Facebook post, because I think parents are largely the ones that are driving that summer job discussion, more so than the actual potential applicants.
Hopefully the true parent.
Yes. And I think that's it for tonight, tomorrow we are focusing on a presentation from social services. We've only handpicked certain departments to make actual presentations to you, so the, this one obviously is so many divisions and so integral to the provision of public services that it's always going to be a presentation. But social services just went through the reorg, there's new staff, and they're actually now at the point where they are implementing their strategies and are almost fully staffed, except for one position. And I think it's important for the town council to continue to see the evolution of when you do a reorg, what that means, both from a financial standpoint, delivery of services and efficiencies. So Cindy Gray will be here for that. In addition to that, we have chosen to showcase the Libraries Park Recreation and the Senior Center, because again, that outreach is and touches so many of the Enfield citizens that it's important for the town council members to have a working understanding of how those budgets work, what the services are, what the challenges are, and how you can respond effectively to constituents who might have concerns about any of those areas. So that will be tomorrow night, and on Thursday, it will be the Police Department, again, another extremely important department in terms of public safety, and one that has been really equipped with a lot of resources from the town, but also continually facing challenges with some unfunded mandates, the Police Accountability Act, as well as so many changing socioeconomic demographics, so I think that that is an important one as well. Internally, we're going to continue to work on some of these funding strategies for the capital improvement, so you're going to see that again probably next week, and on Monday, before our town council meeting, you will have a presentation from Superintendent Dreisak with the beginnings of what that Board of Education budget is going to look like.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we are done for tonight, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do we need, okay, a second?
Second.
Counselor Hopkins. Okay, great, thank you.